...to valuable tips, parents had the opportunity to get their child's ID card.
Kids doing their fingerprints, so just in case, you know, your kids get lost, or somebody take your kid, then you'll, you know, you'll have that protection.
A fun afternoon of priceless information on taking care of the precious little treasures in our lives. I'm Rosha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on car seat safety, you can check out kidsarefirst.org, go to a fire station, or make an appointment with the CHP to make sure your child's car seat is installed properly. Well, weeks of preparation all came down to this: a bridge-building contest to determine whose creation could withstand the most pressure. The students involved were under pressure too, but as Gil Reyes reports, they also had a lot of fun.
Five kilograms. Ten kilograms.
Exactly how much weight can the miniature bridge up top hold? Arlita High School students Oscar Herrera and Christian Sai spent weeks perfecting theirs through a lot of trial and error.
I personally made about 25 bridges. Yeah, and I guess, I hope this one is my final one and holds.
Thirty-one, thirty-two.
Another tough break at LA's 17th Annual Bridge Building Contest.
Really, what's important in the contest is what's called the efficiency. It's how much weight it can hold divided by the weight of the bridge.
Students from eight LA schools worked with mentors from the Bureau of Engineering to create their bridges made of wood sticks and glue. The competition is cosponsored by the American Society of Civil Engineers. One goal is to encourage more young women and minorities to consider careers in engineering.
If that means working for a great organization like the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering, you know, we wholeheartedly encourage that.
It's a bit stressing and also fun, but for me, it's super fun because I love this kind of thing.
Reporting from Boyle Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Congratulations go out to Team Dragon from Robert H. Lewis High School. They took first place in the efficiency category. Team Kool-Aid from Arlita High, the two teens interviewed in this piece, took second. Both teams won all-expenses-paid trips to compete in the international competition held in Chicago earlier this month. You may have heard of World War II internment camps in Northern California and in the Central Valley, but did you know our own San Fernando Valley had one too? It's a hidden piece of LA history. As Gil Reyes reports, a new signpost aims to educate people.
City leaders unveil the sign, a permanent reminder of World War II injustices in the San Fernando Valley. We are in Tahunga, the former location of the Tuna Canyon Detention Station.
At a time when our country is faced with just incredible treatment towards our immigrant populations, this is a very important reminder of why we must never repeat history.
Just beyond this fence, some 2,000 people of German, Japanese, and Italian descent were imprisoned between 1941 and 1943. Many of these people were Americans. The sign goes up, so people will never forget this past injustice.
This is not ancient history, and we cannot act as if we've moved on, like this would never happen again.
Toyosaku Kumai, the former publisher of LA's Raffu Shimpoo Japanese newspaper, was one of 120,000 Japanese-Americans imprisoned in camps nationwide during World War II. The fear was they might have been enemy sympathizers, his grandson Chris.
He was discarded. You know, people can say, "Well, he wasn't beaten or anything like that." No, 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 he was treated indifferently, that they just forgot about him. So by the time he comes back, he's a shell of himself.
Many ex-prisoners who've since passed away had kept Tahunga's past hidden out of shame, but now their children and grandchildren are on a mission to reveal the truth.
Many times we come here and you feel the breeze. I feel them telling me their stories, their heartaches, and encouraging me to continue.
Nancy Oda from the Tuna Canyon Detention Station Coalition is also pushing for a monument and education center at the location, now part of a golf course. Talks with the city continue. For now, we have the sign. In Tahunga, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
LA City leaders declared the site a historical-cultural monument in 2013, but no signage has gone up until now. Mayor Eric Garcetti's budget proposal targets two of the city's biggest issues. City leaders raise awareness about issues that impact people with autism, and outdoor learning becomes part of the school day at one local elementary school. All these stories in City V. Mayor Eric Garcetti unveiled his 2019 budget proposal, a $9.9 billion spending plan that would more than double the city's investment in the fight against homelessness, and put tens of millions of new dollars into street, sidewalk, and traffic safety improvements, while continuing to strengthen the city's fiscal foundation. The budget will invest more than $429 million in permanent housing, temporary shelter, services, and facilities to help homeless Angelenos find their way off the streets and into homes. That represents a 140% increase over last year and includes the $20 million plan to build emergency shelters across the city. Los Angeles celebrated Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month at City Hall, with officials and community leaders speaking about efforts to include and embrace individuals with autism, reducing stigma, and face future challenges. The estimated 60,000 people with autism who live in LA face both opportunities and challenges as they interact with our community. Officials say the city must not only celebrate these Angelenos, it must also address the many barriers autistic people and their families endure, and the need to accommodate and support them.
All individuals impacted by autism deserve a life of inclusion, self-determination, opportunity, and to achieve the highest quality of life possible.
Kids at Malabar Street Elementary celebrated the opening of their new outdoor learning center. Councilmember Jose Weeza and LAUSD officials held a ribbon-cutting for the new green space, which includes bench seating, a walking path, and drought-resistant plants. Several unused bungalows on campus were removed to make room for the learning center. The idea for the outdoor center came from parents who fundraised, and the city pitched in to help.
We need to provide them more green, more areas for them to run around in the grass, trees. That helps the environment, helps with health, and it also just makes them feel more comfortable. You know, makes them feel more focused on their learning, which is why they're here in the first place.
An ambitious plan to refurbish walking paths around Little Tokyo has community members excited. Gil Reyes reports on what's in store for one of downtown's most touristy areas.
If you already love shopping, eating, and sightseeing in downtown's Little Tokyo, just wait till these street enhancements are finished.
On Los Angeles Street, through Toyo Miatake, down Azusa Street, over to Francis Hashimoto Plaza, through Japanese Village Plaza, over to the Japanese-American National Museum.
Area stakeholders and Councilman Jose Weeza kick off $5.3 million worth of improvements. Coming to Little Tokyo, several new crosswalks, 22,000 square feet of sidewalk repairs, and 50 new curb ramps.
Making it more accessible and friendly to pedestrians and connecting to the rest of downtown LA.
An extended pedestrian walkway will finally connect the Japanese-American National Museum to the go-for-broke World War II monument. And you know that slip lane on Second Street and Alameda? Well, that's going away. Look for public art instead, for a more pleasant stroll through one of downtown's most leisurely neighborhoods. In Little Tokyo, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Also coming are more than 100 new trees, two new traffic signals, and 56 streetlights for more visible nighttime strolls in between all that shopping, dining, and playing. Well, come out and celebrate Cinco de Mayo in the city. Sink your teeth into some of the best tacos LA has to offer, and do your part to make sure everyone is counted in the next census. All this in this week's Things to Do. Cinco de Mayo Weekend is a celebration of Mexico's surprise victory over the French forces in Pueblo, Mexico in 1862. The weekend festivals feature popular and traditional music, exhibit booths, cultural dancing, and plenty of delicious Mexican food. The events take place at El Pueblo de la Angeles Historical Monument, May 5 and 6, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Taco fans, listen up. The 9th Annual Taco Madness Festival kicks into high gear, serving up some of the best and tastiest tacos in town. DJs will have you on your feet while you watch artists bring their creative vision to life. It all takes place Saturday, May 5, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 at La Plaza de Cultura Izarte's. Help come up with solutions to make sure everyone gets counted during the 2020 census, especially hard-to-reach populations. Participants will be asked to design creative solutions, technological or otherwise, to make the 2020 census survey more accessible and engaging, especially for those that will be hard to survey, including immigrants, racial and ethnic communities, children 0 to 5 years, renters, college students, individuals with limited English proficiency, and people living in poverty. Some solutions may include mobile apps, outreach toolkits, easy-to-understand informational material, multilanguage-translated material, easy-to-navigate website or digital tools. An accurate census count translates into equitable political representation in Congress, and billions of dollars in federal funds for vital social programs and services in the city and county of LA. The Census 2020 Hackathon takes place Sunday, May 6, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Los Angeles Public Library, located at 630 West 5th Street. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Please, if find a seat. Want to welcome each and every one of you to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 1. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomin' Phil Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weeza, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves, Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Weeza seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, let's all rise. We'll be led today by Mr. O'Farrell, and our flag salute, all rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please place your hand on your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety requests that the following items be continued for 30 days to May 30. That's Items 1B, G, H, and I, and that the lien amount for 1B be reduced to $2,197.50.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then let us move on.
Items 8 through 23 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request from a member to hold Item 9 on the desk for an amending motion.
Okay, let's do that and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 24 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 33 and 34 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
For right now, why don't we do that? Let's hold them on the desk, and until I get a chance to talk to the Budget Chair. If you could move on.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, why don't I quickly move into, we'll do general public comment. If we could bring up Mr. John Walsh on my screen. Mr. Walsh, if you'd come forward. You have Items 1, 24, 25, 29, 30, 31, and 32, and your general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 1 is building and safety. You do a pretty good job there. We have Vice President of the United States living in Hollywood, at Hotel in Hollywood in my neighborhood for the past few weeks, uh, past few days. These are opioid pharmaceutical litigation. We don't need to pay. We now have bringing in a consultant on dope. We don't need any dope consultant. We have, we have the city council can answer any questions concerning dope because they are very much involved in it and understand it. Rewards? Again, you can reinstate these rewards. You have some rewards that are 15 and 16 years old. The drug dealers rule the city. They got rid of the city council. I mean, they got rid of the El Segundo Times, and now they run the whole city. Nobody's going to want to live in the old Times building. Okay, I'll go into my one minute. You know, at the, the mayor has to appear at the MTA Board. He's the chairman of the board. When someone got up and asked him about Glenn Daig, he kicked him out of the meeting while he was speaking. What a scumbag the mayor is. You can't do that here, can you? Because we have the cameras, and the cameras, what the cameras do is they protect us. I want some of you black people to know that until someone took a picture with a Brownie camera and sent it to the Chicago Defender, they just kept hanging people, hanging blacks, and hanging blacks. Once the picture appeared in the Chicago Defender, I know you don't have any history. Do you know what happened when a picture appeared in the Chicago Defender of someone being hanged? They stopped hanging people. The mayor is a scumbag.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Why don't we bring up Mr. Herman? You have Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. Mr. Herman, come forward.
So if you have not heard regarding Herman, the unsolved Herman murder of Herman Johnson, you would never know if Herman was murdered. But most unsolved murders go unnoticed in the City of Los Angeles, AKA City of Angels. But on a daily basis, unsolved murders happen because we have drunk elected officials working at their limited capacity to stop this. And how do we stop unsolved murders? We have to step it up with more money. I'm not going to rat out $50,000 to someone who I know killed another person, Herman. I'm not going to rat out $50,000 to someone who I know killed another person, Herman. I'm not going to be the watermelon man selling out my bitches over a murder. Needs to stop, and you need to enforce local authority called LAPD that fuck cadets to get on the J O B. And then I go into Item 25, Mr. Keebler, the Cookie Monster, dealing with pharmaceutical opioid, opoid, openopanoid bills, pills, bills. Good job. Now I got your attention. You see, Jeff Session is right in Washington. We need to step up the game and stop all these serious crimes under drugs and alcohol abuse. What is Herman talking about? Well, I'm not talking about watermelon patches where you grow drugs or expose drugs to the population of people. I'm talking about Joe Busciano and Englander, who at one time were LAPD cadets and now sit in this horseshoe and cannot help Mr. Dowd, D-O-W-D, not Matt Dowd, but Dowd, L-L-P, to understand that Paul Krikorian's bar license is ineffective because he's working under a fake bar license. Thank you. The laughter is always there when it comes to drugs. And as long as there's no community impact statement, which none was submitted for the record, because as we all know, it's all about the Trump economics, as long as we have ruthless politicians who don't step up the game to stop drug sales, alcohol sales, we will always have substance abuse problems in Los Angeles. Now regarding Pinocote 1197, no, what is it, Rue? Help me out. Is it Pinocote 1192.7 parentheses C's, a serious crime? Well, I got more common sense than the mayor to kick Wayne Spindler, John Walsh, out of a public meeting in Metro, dealing with, does the mayor have a gay lover? Glenn Dake, D-A-K-E. That's all we want to know. You know, if I took it in the back, or if I got on my knees and took it somewhere else, that I will never do, could not be a dick sucker, because I don't pad my wallet with politicians' dirty money. What do you mean dirty money? Dirty money. The same dirty money that allowed David Rue not to give the name of Jane Doe when he was fucking her inside a car.
All right, thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay, thank you. Let's vote on Items 2, 7, 20, uh, 2 through 7, and 28 through 31. Could you pull those up on your screen? Ready? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Let's have Ms. McAllister, Items 1, 25, 26, and 32, and then your general public comment. You had set the timer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start with item number 1. We still have a lot of liens on these homes. I want the mayor to come to these meetings. We elected him as mayor. We haven't seen him, and the only time he shows up is when there's an award ceremony. I want to know why we're sending these illegals to look at these homes on the outside and then report those violations to this city. And once those homes are foreclosed on, the illegals are buying them. Illegal aliens should not be allowed to buy housing in this city. Item number 25, where we are talking about Mayor Garcetti and the city council, stop hiring all these lawyers. You've got about 500 lawyers on staff, a budget of $124 million, and every time something new comes up, you hire some more lawyers. This is for the drug scam you all got going. I was in the meeting when you said, Mr. President, that you're going to make a lot of money. That's what drug dealers say. Okay, so quit hiring all these lawyers. This is the biggest scam in this city. The city attorney's office, Mark Wees, number 26, he wants $75,000 to fund a special event. Listen, man, we want you to build those three housing developments for those black people. You don't need any $75,000 for some parties, okay? Build that housing. You and Weezer, or the two who came up with this HHH scam. Weezer is supposed to be building $100,000, $100 million he has to build three projects on Skid Row, and because black people on Skid Row, he hasn't built a darn thing. I want the feds up in here.
They're back on topic.
I'm on topic, number 25, about Harris Dawson wanting $75,000. We need the feds up in here, and we need them up in here now. Number 26, that's about him, Mark Wees. Now, I want to talk about 32, where Weezer, 14th district, he wants $15,000 for some doggone furniture. You get that 100 million and start building, young man, or I'm going to get you thrown off this council, all of you who are not building. This is serious business. This is not a joke. I see you laughing over there, Sadio. You've got all the illegal aliens in your district. Anything you build is going to an illegal alien. Now, let's talk about item number 1 again. I want an investigation. I want to know who's living in this housing we got in this city. Every illegal alien that's living in a house, we want them out of there. Now, for the ones who lost their homes, here's another address where you can go, and sometimes you may have to leave Los Angeles. Here's one in, I've got a senior development in Long Beach, 1220 Atlantic Avenue. Okay, it's called St. Mary Tower. Black people, get over there, senior housing. I have listings. I have tons of listings of this affordable housing. But some of it's not available because the illegal aliens are in there. But once we get going with President Trump, we're going to get those illegal aliens out.
Thank you. Give her a minute.
Now, here's the deal. I'm in support of Travis Allen as the governor of the state of California. He's a Republican out of Orange County. He is the only one in Sacramento who was against child prostitution. The only one. Child prostitution means that these children, and a lot of children don't have money, they want to get these Nikes and whatnot, they go out and they say, hey, I can get some money, I can prostitute. See, children, they can't think like we think, like adults. You see what I mean? And then you Democrats, and Governor Brown had the nerve to legalize spreading AIDS. That means that these children, once they go out and prostitute, these men can not use condoms and give them AIDS, and it's a misdemeanor. It used to be a felony. Now it's a misdemeanor. I'm telling you Democrats, you Bolsheviks, you communists, that your day is coming soon. Just look at the weather out there. God is speaking. Look at the weather, 60-something degrees out there, and this is May. He's not playing with you. You better get your act together.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, that closes the multiple comment section. Is Ms. Richardson, Jacqueline Richardson, come on up. General public comment. And as she's making her way up, Madam Clerk, why don't we prepare to vote on Items 24, 25, 26, and 32? On those items, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 24 forthwith.
Without objection. Yes, Ms. Richardson?
Holograms are secrets. Most people don't know about them. A hologram, if they go to jail, they can walk right through those bars. If they put handcuffs on them, they can pull their hands out of the handcuffs. If a holograph were here right now, I could turn my head, and that paper's gone. I don't know where it went. It goes that fast. For this reason, because holograms are secrets, Chief Beck doesn't know I'm asking, but he needs help apprehending and discovering holograms. Holograms commit crimes, and they transfer themselves through the air somehow. He needs to know how to transfer, how they transfer through the air. It's not something you can see with your eyes. You need high-tech equipment to apprehend holograms. They have networks that go through the satellite system and cellphone system and radio system. They need apprehension for this. Because of this reason, I'm asking that Chief Beck get help with that.
Thank you. Okay, do we have Item 27, Ms. Hayes? Item 27? Item 27? Okay, now let's prepare to vote on Item 27. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. City Attorney, you want to walk us through the two closed session items?
So we've just taken public comment on them. There was none. If members don't have any questions, I believe it can be voted on and open to accept the city attorney opinions.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to explain it?
Yes, on Item 33, in the case entitled "The State of Guzman versus the City of Los Angeles", consolidated with Marcos Custaneda versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,950,000 in settlement of the matter. And then in Item 34, in the case entitled "The City of Los Angeles versus Janice Lansing", there is a recommendation to expend up to an additional $418,473.86 to acquire the temporary construction easement for the Venice Dual Force Main Replacement Project.
Okay, let's vote on these two items. No, all right, Items 33 and 34. Okay, we'll vote on, you want to split it up? So let's vote on 33. On 33, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, now let's vote on the next. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mark Burton, do we have a Mark Burton on Item 1A? Mark, come forward.
Good morning. I'm here on 10321 North Amboy. As I said before, my job is to handle properties when the property owners are out of town, they live in another state and/or out of the country. And this is a protest on this lien in here, and the $26, $2700 on this property. And which, by the way, I just want to let you know that property owners in general are paying the non-compliance fee of $660 to Building and Safety. Building and Safety wait for like about six months, and they send a bill again to property owners. Property owners don't know this, and they go, they pay it again. That is happening.
Okay, now can I have Darrell Robertson? Are you here? Darrell Robertson, come forward.
We received a...
Speak into the mic, please.
Yes, we received a lien notice, I guess, on our property of something that had been, was being handled by the Housing Department. And the Housing Department had, this is basically a duplicate from what the Department of Housing was already handling, and had already imposed a lien on our property. And we tried to explain this to the Building and Safety.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we continue this item for 30 days? So we'll continue it until May 30th. I then want you to go over and talk to the staff, and let's try, this is on Item 1F, let's try to work all of this out. It sounds like it could be a misunderstanding, and so why don't we give it 30 days? If you just go to my right, you'll see a couple of people waving at you. Those are the people that you should chat with, and hopefully we can work it out before May 30th. How's that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now let's prepare to vote on the remaining. Items on number 1.
And, Mr. President, before we vote on that item, the Department of Building and Safety has requested that 1C and 1D be received and filed. As 1C, the lien was paid and the remaining amount rescinded, and 1D, the lien was paid in full.
Okay, so without objection. So now let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, for Item 9, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yeah, I'd now like to recognize Mr. Paul Corretts for his presentation. Mr. Corretts?
In September of last year, President Wesson and I introduced a motion requesting that the Personnel Department administer a special walking competition among the city council offices. We did this to show not only enthusiasm for the city's new wellness program, but most especially to support our employees as we encourage them to participate in wellness program activities to help support and improve their health. We recognize that wellness is really about taking the time to take care of ourselves, and it's often easier to make that happen when we do it together. A little team-based friendly competition can sometimes be just the thing that motivates us to help create good, healthy habits. So I know we're all very anxious to find out which council teams did the best in the competition, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Personnel Department General Manager, Wendy Macy, to present the winner.
Thank you, Councilmember Corretts. First, I want to offer a congratulations to each and every council office. We had about 250 participants from the council office in our Walk Plus program. It was very well received, and it's very important for our city staff to see city leadership embrace the program as you all did. And in our book, you are all winners, so I want to congratulate you all. I do want to give a special mention, though, because of course we do actually have a winner. So first, our second-place team, I want to give a mention to Team Sadio, which came in second, so congratulations to Team Sadio.
Let's give Team Sadio a round of applause.
Applause. Great job, Team Sadio. And now to announce our big winner, our champion who logged the most virtual miles this competition, and our winner this year in our first annual is Team Wesson.
Yeah!
Yes. So if I could ask some members of Team Wesson to come down, and we have a little trophy for you.
Where's my team? Go, hurry up, guys. Don't be shy.
Herb, you should come down too and help accept it.
If I can get Ms. Martinez, can you? Let's give them a round of applause. They really did a great job. I'm so proud of all of them.
Do you want to say anything, or do you want to wait for our president to come down? All right, I want to know who did the most miles. I get, oh, really?
I think Justin did the most miles. I'm not sure. But you know, I want to just say this. First of all, this is a heck of a trophy, and it's an honor to win this. But on a serious note, a member of my staff came up to me, and he said, you know what? Nobody loses in a competition like this, because it makes you healthier. And just some of the tips, some of the things that we did as an office, other than me being a hard taskmaster and texting people three times a day saying, how many steps did you do, and where, you know, we can't, we can't let Sadio beat us. But no, we would do group walks every day at around lunchtime and put in about 4,000 steps. We would not take the elevator down. We would walk down the steps. We would have walking meetings where we're literally walking and talking. And even though the competition is over, I would say that there's a significant number of members of this staff, my staff, that still walk over 12,000 steps a day. So it, there is a win-win all the way around. So if you guys would give my staff another round of applause, I'm so proud of them. Thank you to Personnel and Mr. Corretts. And I will, where's Sadio? And wait a minute, and who else really tried? Bloomingfield, yeah! Woo! Thank you all so very much.
You guys should take a lap around the horseshoe, come on.
Hey, we can do that. I mean, we can do that.
Congratulations again. Let's give him a big round of applause. Mr. Sadio, I heard you have a presentation, sir?
Yes, I do. Given the success of the Team Wesson, we wanted to create a celebration for them. And so we're going to bring a celebration from the Pomona Fairplex. And we're going to bring it here to Los Angeles, just so we can celebrate Team Wesson and their great accomplishments. So let's start with a video. Que buena! Thank you. Colleagues, we're here to promote an event that has routinely been hosted in Pomona, but now after 20 years is coming to the big stage here in downtown Los Angeles and exactly in CD1. LBI Media, home to Que Buena, La Ranchera, Estrella TV, the stations of the popular Mexican community, has produced this show for over 20 years, and this will be the first time that it comes to our district. As you know, Cinco de Mayo is an annual celebration held each year to observe and commemorate the Mexican Army's unlikely victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Puebla on May 5, 1862, under the leadership of General Ignacio Saragosa. Here in the United States, in the '60s and '70s, it took on a different significance as young Mexican-Americans who called themselves Chicanos began to celebrate that as a victory for all Mexicans and Mexican-Americans. It has a long and rich history in this country. It actually goes back, if you read any of the literature from Dr. David Hayes-Baltista, goes way back into the presence of Mexicans and Mexican-Americans here, both in Southern California, but throughout the rest of the country. Today, we have with us Marco Gonzalez, the VP of Public Relations and Corporate Affairs, and we have also Pepe Garza, who's a well-known DJ, radio DJ, composer, radio, television personality, who is the programming director of the leading regional Mexican station, La Que Buena. Described in the LA Times as "the King Midas of regional Mexican music," both in the U.S. and Mexico, Garza has a long, notable, successful, and prolific career in the world of radio. Pepe is credited with launching the careers of music icons, your favorites, Adán Chalino Sánchez, and of course Jenny Rivera. Pepe?
Muchas gracias. An honor, realmente, el estar presente aquí, el recibir, pues este reconocimiento de parte de las autoridades de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, una ciudad a la que llegué hace 20 años y he podido cumplir mis sueños.
It's an honor to be here in the City of Los Angeles, and... I arrived here in the City of Los Angeles 20 years ago, and it's an honor to be here.
Y estar haciendo una familia en esta hermosa ciudad.
And to raise a family here in this beautiful city.
Y además promoviendo las tradiciones, las raíces de la familia mexicana.
And to also promote the roots and the traditions of the family, the Mexican family.
Que creemos que es un valor muy importante que aportamos los latinos a la comunidad mundial, el amor a la familia.
So we think that we have a great treasure, we have a great tradition that we promote the sacred, the sanctity of the family. We're promoting the family.
Muchas gracias, y happy Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you so much, and happy Cinco de Mayo to all of you.
Thank you, Councilmen. We are very honored and proud to be here in downtown. We are celebrating, Lieberman Broadcasting, also known as LBI Media, we're celebrating our 30th anniversary. We're an Angelino company. Our co-founder was born in Los Angeles, Leonard Lieberman, a Mexican-Jewish family. José Lieberman came from Veracruz, Mexico, as an immigrant, studied at UCLA, and basically established the first and only Spanish broadcasting company west of the Mississippi. So there's a lot of legacy here in Los Angeles. Unlike our competitors, we're family-owned, we're minority-owned, and we're very, very proud to call Los Angeles our home with our Estrella TV network, the fastest-growing network in the country, and our radio stations, of course, across the country, La Que Buena being our number-one station. Thank you for this honor. We're proud to be here in L.A. We're proud to be in your district, Councilmen. The practicality of the state park is great for all Angelinos. It's close to public transportation, it's easy access. So we welcome all of you from all the districts to come this Sunday to see some of the top brass in regional Mexican music. It's a free event, great food. So again, thank you, and we're proud to be Angelinos. Thank you very much.
Again, final invitation. These events are family affairs. You can bring your parents and grandparents, your children, and your grandchildren. It's the type of events that should be hosted at the state park, and we welcome each and every one of you this Sunday, Cinco de Mayo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to general public comment. Jane Ho, are you here? Anybody here with that name? Noah Weiss, followed by Antonia Ramirez and Brian Barajas.
Councilmembers, good morning. I think if you appease lawlessness, I think you end up getting more of it. The tenants at a duplex located at 5446, 5440 West Franklin, in Mr. O'Farrell's district, were not paid the relocation monies to which they're entitled to be paid. There was a re-appearing yesterday, there was 33 violations found, code violations found. Again, this was a duplex used as an illegal boarding house. Mr. O'Farrell is obviously aware of this, he was clearly aware of it. The tenants were not Ellis. Had they been Ellis, they would have gotten their relocation money. Mr. O'Farrell needs to basically do what Mr. Harris-Dawson did for his tenants over his district, 7715 South Crenshaw. He can introduce a motion, he can have HCID determine the relocation, and he can have the council order the relocation monies paid from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the benefits of the tenants to be reimbursed later. I call on this council, and I call on Mr. O'Farrell, to do the right thing, take care of these tenants. Thank you.
Next speaker is Antonia Ramirez. Antonia Ramirez, after you speak, it's Mr. Brian Barajas. You're on general public comment, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Please boycott the Ralph's Markets for unscrupulous and unfair business practices, predatory business practices, and illegal hiring of a lot of wetbacks and gangbangers. Yesterday, April 30, 2018, I went to Ralph's Market at about 3:50 p.m. at 5601 Wilshire Boulevard, L.A., where I ended up having to speak to police officers from the Wilshire area. The two police officers who came regarding the problems that escalated inside the market, perpetrated by Bryson, Chris Ariola, Adriana, Alex, and Andrew, being an innocent employee. But Simmons, Officer Simmons, and Officer Trejo, whom I did not trust, and I demanded their sergeant, and Sergeant Euro came out to take my report. I was banned from Ralph's Market because I stood up. If you look at my shopping cart, I have a broken wheel. I got nothing but mistreatment, attacks, and violations and abuses by the staff there, because they are all wetbacks.
Ms. Ramirez, sorry to cut you off, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Barajas, are you still here? Followed by Michael Ross.
Anyways, I turned in a leaflet, British geopolitics, enemy of Trump, enemy of America, enemy of peace. This direction of British-led lies is particularly pertaining to Netanyahu's recent rant that the United States should go after another country. You got to understand Netanyahu is just a puppet of that British imperialist outlook. I'm going to be working on a political campaign in Texas. Keisha Rogers, a LaRouche candidate, will be running against Al Green. And the potential of her campaign to shatter the psychological backwardness of the American people is very well-placed. It's very highly that she will win, and if she wins, we all win.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barajas. Michael Ross, followed by Zuma Dogg. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Michael Ross. I was a tenant at 5440 West Franklin Avenue, square in the middle of Councilman O'Farrell's district. On April 25th, I was evicted with a number of other disadvantaged tenants in an illegal lockout that didn't have to happen. I respectfully petitioning the council for relocation funds that have not been paid. Mr. O'Farrell and the council are in a position to make a meaningful change for myself and the lives of others. And I call on O'Farrell and the council to introduce a motion similar to that of Marquise Harris-Dawson, the one he did for his people, to pay relocation funds from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, reimbursable by the owner. It is a simple solution to a problem that needn't be a problem, and it's a problem you can't turn your back on, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Zuma Dogg. Are you still here, sir? There you are. You're the last speaker on general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm here today to address a very serious issue, and I hope that we can get some traction on this. I'm calling for the immediate resignation of David Rue. He's being represented by Jane Doe, by Lisa Bloom. The allegation, he drugged a 16-year-old woman, 16-year-old girl. When she couldn't move, he removed her clothes and sexually assaulted. He went to town on her. Okay, the DEA somehow magically lost the case file, so ran out statute of limitations. And David Rue, he was working for the Board of County Supervisors at the time. How convenient. Now, people, media, alert! David Rue, R.Y.U., he must resign. He's compromised. If he's willing to drug and remove the clothes of somebody who can't move, that 16-year-old girl, that's some serious thuggery, and he's an elected official that has power over his district, and this cannot be allowed. Immediate resignation of David Rue. This is not a political issue. This is a decency issue of everybody in this room. Demand he steps down today, now!
You're done. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman, if you keep continuing to applaud, I'm going to have you removed from the council chambers. That's your first and final warning. Mr. O... Okay, members, we're going to move on to special one. That's been circulated. Mr. Buscaino? Special one, sir? On the findings?
Thank you, Madam President. So colleagues, this Thursday at Alta C, I'll be holding my State of the District address. And we were told this morning by the Fire Department that they would need some additional resources, and I ask that you support this special before you, so we can move forward on just this three-hour event at Alta C, which, as you know, as you heard, will be a game-changer for the entire waterfront and this entire city. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. We're going to go ahead and vote on the findings. Mr. Englander, did you want to add something? Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Mr. Zuma Dogg, I need you to sit down or please leave our council chambers. Sergeants, can you please escort him out? Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on the findings on special one. It's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We have a card from Mr. Herman on special one.
So as you heard, removing people from public meetings simply because they stand...
You're not on the item, this is on special one. Stick to the item.
But the issue on special one was a hidden agenda. How would I find out unless we speak on items pertinent to this council resolving the issues involved on item 23? Now, if we can't discuss the issues, Mr. City Attorney Folger, you should have a special agenda in place.
And we're off-topic.
Mr. Herman, thank you very much. You're off-topic, you're done. Sergeants, Mr. Herman, you're done. You're not on special one. Thank you, Mr. Herman, you're done. Please remove Mr. Herman out of council chambers. He's disrupting the meeting, he's not speaking on the item. He continues to disrupt the meeting by yelling and shouting, not speaking on the item.
And as usual, just for the record, Mr. Herman is continuing to shout as he leaves the room and disrupts our meeting, shouting as he walks backwards to slow things down. And he's still shouting as he leaves the room.
Mr. Herman continues to shout and disrupt our meeting. Let's go ahead and vote on this item on special one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posting a referral, members, are there any announcements? A request to send forth with on special one for Mr. Buscaino? Members, are there any announcements? See none, if we can please rise for adjourned motions? You have an announcement, Mr. Rue, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an announcement. I want to wish everybody a Happy Asian Pacific American Heritage Month this May, and I want to thank everyone for participating in our art installation on the bridge with all your inspiring quotes. And I want to make sure that you and your staff are aware of some truly amazing events that are coming up that we celebrate. On May 11th at 6:00 p.m., there will be a Mulan screening. It's a Disney's... It's a Disney film that's celebrating its 20th anniversary, and it will be a family and it will be a family fun sing-along, and it will be at Park Center at Griffith Park. That's May 11th at 6:00 p.m., open to the entire public. And of course, the Identity L.A. Concert on May 12th, Saturday, at 4:00 p.m. here at City Hall, the music festival for the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in Los Angeles. It will be on the steps of City Hall at Grand Park, and we will have Mike Shinoda of Lincoln Park, Jay Park, Hotel Garuda, and many more. And all the food will be curated by Roy Choi of Kogi BBQ fame. And local, and local. Please join me in the API communities of Los Angeles for these events. You can come talk to me or any of my staff for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Any other announcements, members? Seeing none, any adjourning motions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we adjourn in the memory of Joanna Jo Close Swart, who passed away on March 31st. And today, I'm joined by my friend and her husband, Rock Swart, and their sons, Timothy and Russell. Jo was born in Nova Scotia, Canada, on March 25th, 1936. In 1953, her family moved to La Crescenta, California, and Jo graduated from Glendale High School in 1954. After graduation, Jo worked at the Montrose Branch of the Security First National Bank. It was at this branch where she met Roger "Rock" Swart, who was just hired as a teller. They were married on May 11th, 1963, and settled down in Tahanka, California. Jo was a loving friend, wife, and grandmother. Every Christmas, she made cookies by the dozens, and each family member received their own tin of grandma's cookies. She also loved to crochet, and every time there was a new baby in the family, they received one of Jo's baby blankets. Jo was survived by Rock, her husband of 54 years and 10 months, her two sons, Timothy and Russell, and her daughter-in-laws, Kathy and Jen, and twin grandsons, Ryan and Jacob. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our condolences to you and your family. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members. It's a tough weekend in South Los Angeles. I want to ask that we adjourn on the, in the memory of the Reynoso family of South Los Angeles. On Saturday, a driver under the influence ran a red light, crashing into a vehicle with five family members in them. Three of the family members could not be saved and passed away at the site. Two were, two family members were rushed to the hospital and remain in very, very critical condition. It's truly heartbreaking whenever we lose and compromise an entire family in one shot, both unsafe driving and then driving under the influence. And so our hearts and prayers go out to the Reynoso family, and we pray for a speedy recovery and a successful recovery of the two family members that remained. A second adjourning motion is, in memory of Dr. James Cone, who's a name that is not known to a lot of us, but his work is known to a lot of us. James Cone is one of the premier authors of liberation theology and informed the work of people like Martin Luther King and Oscar Romero in Latin America, and Thomas Kilgore and Chip Murray and Cardinal Mahoney here in Los Angeles. He wrote the major text for liberation theology and encouraged clergy people to use religion to improve the quality of life for the people that were practicing it. And he spurred a practice of activism, activism among faith leaders all over the world, not just here in the United States. So James Cone.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.